Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turned Left. I am your host, Indiana's Own Dana Black, coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Pearl Studios where we talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Woo, man, there's a whole lot of noise happening at the federal level. I mean, it just seems like people are just taking classified documents and just putting them in shoeboxes on their bookshelves. I don't know. I don't know what Biden is thinking about having classified documents. But you know, the difference between him and the orange menace? His boys found the documents and said, yo, we got some stuff over here. Y'all need to come get this. And they turned it over, unlike the other one who wanted to, I don't know. You're not coming to get my classified documents. I'm going to keep them because Putin, I mean, I want to keep them for prosperity. Whatever. But you see what's happening with the Republican majority in the House? They've already passed two bills that are not going to get past the Democratic-held Senate, thank goodness. One is that they were passing an anti-abortion bill, basically to criminalize practitioners if they don't revive the child, if the child during a botched abortion isn't given medical attention, but they do that anyway. No doctor is not going to take care of a child that was born alive, so stop it. And the other one is that they wanted to defund some stuff, the IRS. And that particular bill is going to actually increase the deficit. But I thought they were all about reducing the deficit. Hmm, maybe they don't actually understand what the CBO is. I mean, it's not like they actually read, a lot of those folks read the Constitution. Let's be real. But that's Washington. You know me. I want to stay in our borders from lake to river, from west to east. You know me. So General Assembly is underway. There hasn't been a whole lot of noise just yet, but I'm sure, give it time, give it time. I'm most certain that those folks in the House and in the Senate will come up with something to, I don't know, continue to marginalize already marginalized people. It's gonna happen. But there is one bill that I want everyone to pay attention to. Look, we all want to save some money. I get it. We all need a little extra dollars in our pocket. I get it. You, listen, I always need a little extra money. But the Indianapolis Star reports, "As we look to our long-term future, I think the goal for Indiana should be to totally eliminate individual income tax rates in the years to come," said Senator Travis Holdman on Monday. He is sponsoring Senate Bill 3, which is one of eight quote-unquote priority bills that the Senate Republicans will focus on getting passed over the next few months. It would create a new commission made up primarily of lawmakers. And you know, when they get to pick who is going to be, it's not going to be much blue in the mix. Y'all already know that. And they will be charged with studying the state's current tax climate. Now, as income tax goes, Indiana is already at the low end. A law passed last year would lower the rate from its current 3.23% to 2.9% over seven years, so long as the state revenue growth reaches at least 2%. The rate will drop this year to 3.15%, saving Hoosiers around, making $50,000 around $40 a year. If all the cuts get phased in, the same taxpayer will pay, excuse me, $165 a year in tax, would save $165 a year. I know that sounds wonderful. I mean, gosh, $165 a year? Woo, I don't know what I'll do with all that money. But they think that the goal of eliminating the income tax would be to attract and retain workers in our state. So well, let's think about this for just a second, y'all. I know everybody likes to look at Florida and say, oh, my gosh, they don't have any income tax. Oh, my goodness, that would be fantastic. I agree. But let's look, think about what our state income tax go toward. They go towards public edu-, some of it goes towards public education. Some of it goes towards public health, infrastructure, state employee salaries, and benefits. And it also funds some of the pension plans. So if you eliminate the income, the state income tax, you'll have to make up that revenue somewhere because it is the second-largest revenue stream in the state behind sales tax. So where would you be able to make up those funds? You either have to make them up one place or eliminate services. One place that you would be able to make up those funds would be obviously increasing the sales tax that much more. But you could, they could also increase property taxes. Now, we already have a cap on the property taxes, but if they increase it, how many people would be able to afford homes when we are already in a situation in Indiana where we don't have significant affordable housing? Think about that, right? People need a roof over their head, but if there's not enough affordable housing, eliminating the income tax would even make, would make that much fewer, that many fewer affordable housing options, right? The second, of course, and then sales tax goes through the roof, and then everything you buy, you know, you're paying extra on. Or they're going to cut services. So the governor came out this week in his State of the State address and said he wanted to address and put my money toward public education, teacher salaries, and retention. But if we phase out income tax, how will he be able to accomplish those goals? Now, guys, look, I am with you. I totally, totally get wanting to cut taxes. I get that. But we live in a society where we have a lot of shared resources. And that state income tax goes to those shared resources, not to mention how many local municipalities receive money from those funds. So if you are in, I don't know, Jay County where I was this past summer, and they talked about how the flooding up there was so really, really bad, and it was continual, and they haven't received the resources to address the flooding. If they cut the income tax revenue, where would they possibly get those funds to address those infrastructure needs? Hmm. And also, I want you to understand, looking at Florida, because this is what they're doing, because they're ready to retire already, because some of those cats probably should. They're looking at, well, Florida can do it, we can do it too. Guys, nobody loves Indiana more than Indiana's Own Dana Black. I love my state. I believe in my state. But we do not have the tourism that Florida has. We don't have, yeah, we got Holiday World, but is Holiday World Disney World? I need, I need y'all to think about that, the scale. Holiday World, Disney World. We have, sure, we have the dunes and we have Indiana Beach. But do we have Fort Lauderdale? Do we have Miami, Jacksonville, Tampa, Sarasota, Long Beach? Clearwater, St. Pete? Do we, Destin? Do we have any of that? Where people just come on a random Tuesday to go bask in the sun? Do we have that kind of revenue? I don't think that we do. I mean, we can, we can throw a Mean Convention. Oh, my God, we can throw a Mean Convention, we have that race every year that generates revenue in Indianapolis, I might add. We can really do a 4-H Club. And we can toss in a Final Four and a Super Bowl again, because we hosted a Mean Super Bowl. But y'all, on a random Wednesday, spring break, vacationing, snowbirds, people leave Indiana between December and April to go to Florida. We just don't have the revenue generation in tourism to make up for that kind of loss. I don't want to pay taxes any more than anybody else, but I also want to make sure our teachers are properly funded. I want to make sure our schools are properly funded. And I'm still waiting for the Lieutenant Governor, who is now running for governor. When she was elected, said that her, one of her top priorities was to get high-speed internet in rural Indiana. Yeah, that, that ain't really happened yet either. So when you cut the revenue, how is her grand eight-year failed plan going to work? Thank God for those Democrats in Washington with their infrastructure bill getting passed last year so that we may be able to get started on that. Guys, I would love to hear what your thoughts are on that. Feel free to share in the chat. I just don't know how we could sustain the services that our income tax, you know, pays for if we're not actually collecting it anymore. I guess y'all just have to fend for yourselves and put a plow on the front of your Tesla or whatever you gotta do. You gotta take your own garbage to the dump, you know? I don't know. It's, it's just kind of interesting to me that a state that is not, you know, a winter haven, not a place folks want to be when it's negative three degrees like it was the week of Christmas. We need to think this through, y'all. There are going to be a lot of people hurt if we cut the income tax. There's going to be a lot of people hurt. We're going to have people who are on fixed incomes that are going to be hurt. We're going to have students that are going to be hurt. And we're not even talking about higher ed, right? We're not even talking about that. So I just want y'all to watch this bill, watch, watch it go through the House and Senate. It's gonna get passed. They're gonna conduct the study. But we have to see what they come from, what comes from the study to see if it is viable for Indiana. And honestly, I, I'm not a, I'm not an accountant. I'm not a financial wizard. I am just a pragmatic human who looks at the things that those things pay for and then go, well, how you going to pay for them? Ain't that what they always ask? When they want to roll out a new program, how you going to pay for it? They always giving tax cuts, but haven't figured out how to pay for it. So you guys need to watch that. SB 3, write that down, pay attention to it, see what happens, who votes for it, who doesn't, how that study goes, because that could impact our state for decades and generations to come. All right. Uh, look, look at here, y'all. Hey, who's your Democrats? Are you looking for a content creator for your campaign that won't break your budget? Then look no further than Black Pearl Studios. Whether you want to livestream your event or create a campaign video, we have all the tools you need to help you share your message. Scan the QR code and visit the website at wwwblackpearl-its.com. Indiana's Own and Black Pearl Studios, we have you covered. I'm loving my new tools too, by the way. Y'all see, I'm able to kind of shift through the screens. I'm having such a good time learning all about all this great technology that I have. Okay, y'all, now it's time to talk about my guest, because you know, I'm excited. First of all, Emily Styron, Mayor Emily Styron. You're making me cry over here, not running for mayor again of Zionsville. I loved having you in the room when you came and talked to us, but that's okay. I see what you did in Zionsville. You have cultivated people to run for office and seek an ability to lead their communities in your stewardship. So I want to thank you for your service over there. I talked about you a little bit last week. But the reason why I'm excited is because we have a candidate now who is running for the Zionsville Town Council at Large. Y'all give it up for Amanda Rubek. How you doing, Amanda? Welcome to the show.
Well, thank you, Dana, and I am doing absolutely wonderful. Thank you so much for having me on the show. I think we're going to have a great evening and a wonderful conversation. I'm excited to be here, but thank you again.
It is my pleasure, and thank you for putting your name on the ballot, because I know it is not easy. So tell the people who you are and where you come from.
Yeah, so I am Amanda Rubek, and I'm a fortunate Hoosier that decided on Zionsville as a place to live and raise my family and serve the community. I have a husband, two daughters, both are in middle school, so pray for me, y'all, because they are two daughters in middle school, and that's enough said, right?
Pretty much.
Honestly, they're wonderful children, and I am blessed to be their mother. That is the first and foremost best position I've ever held in my life is being a mom. And for me, I have had a long career in the financial industry. I have spent 20-plus years, started when I was 10, right?
10. You was on, wait a minute, you was on Wall Street at 10? Come on, sir.
I have had a successful career in the financial industry, managing teams and various different avenues within banking, and I've really enjoyed it. I have absolutely loved being a leader. I currently oversee 22 locations for Star Financial Bank today in central Indiana. And I also give back a lot to the community. So when I say that I am fiscally and well-involved, that is not a joke by any stretch of the imagination. And some people would say that I am the busiest person that they possibly know, and that might be true. But I currently have the pleasure of serving on the Zionsville Community Development Corporation for the town of Zionsville, the Finance Committee for the town of Zionsville. I serve in the Zionsville Chamber of Commerce and the Zionsville Business Advocacy Committee. And I serve on the Board of Directors for ZeeWorks, which is the entrepreneurial launchpad for Zionsville. So heavily invested because I believe in serving the community and giving back. It's just part of who I am. But for me, I decided that I needed to get involved in watching town council meetings because I was asked to start the Zionsville Business Advocacy Committee. And so about two and a half to three years ago, I began really starting to watch the town council meetings and attend them in person. There was a short period of time during COVID when they were all virtual, but then they came back to attend those. And Zionsville really is in a very critical phase of redevelopment and growth, which will take people like myself with strong fiscal expertise and leadership, but also a focus on Zionsville and making sure that we're progressing and we're moving forward. It's going to take vision and it's going to take those who are so solution-minded to plan for Zionsville future while preserving what's unique about Zionsville, but taking us to the next level, and then also focus on workforce development. Currently, we're riddled in discourse. Unfortunately, when that happens, that does nothing for the community. It does nothing for Zionsville. And I am running to change that. And I'm running at large because I was encouraged to run at large because people wanted to vote for me. And that means that my message is resonating with people. And honestly, I think it's time for the temperament to change on the council. I think it's time for leadership, for somebody that has those skills that doesn't have to go off onto rants. Can keep the composure and focus on the solution rather than just ranting about an issue that doesn't solve anything. It doesn't keep the focus on Zionsville, and it doesn't progress us forward at all.
I love it. I mean, wow, 20 years in the finance. I'm going to tell you something, I deal with ones and zeros, so I applaud all of you finance folks. I never understand that. But, but what about finance made you think, okay, well, let me go into the, the public service? Let me become a public servant with, with my skill set?
Um, when I think of Zionsville specifically, I think that we are really bound by certain TIF districts. And we do also have a little bit of a lack of understanding of TIF, and that's indicative based off of some questions that the council members bring up. When you can't understand amortization of TIF and how that works, then there's really a lack of knowledge there. And it was not too long ago, back in the fall time, when that was really transpiring, because we did have a TIF bond before the, the town council. But we're also in that phase where you have to look beyond TIF and not keep us strapped to TIF.
Right.
Municipal strategies and some fiscal strategies that really can take us to the next level. And I think that that is taking a page out of other surrounding communities' books and using those to our advantage. The Zionsville Gateway is a prime example of that. I think that we have an opportunity where we could take the piece of property that the town owns, and we could then build a mixed-use building on that piece of property. We could hold that, we could take that revenue stream and then go do other projects in the, in the community. We could also stand up geothermal next to that building and then take those revenues as well and go do other things too. It's a matter of looking beyond what we are currently doing, but also planning for the future. We're in need of a five-to-10-year fiscal plan as well. And that's high on my priority list is, I do believe that we need to sit down and start to really think of some financial strategies and well into the future. We have things like fire stations that we have to pay for and stuff like that. So it's a matter of understanding every department, their priorities are, how much that's going to cost, right?
Yeah.
Because you don't go out and buy a car today and think, okay, how do I pay for that now that I've bought it?
Right, you, you put that together first. And I find it interesting because, you know, as Democrats, we notoriously have the, the rap of being, you know, not being fiscally responsible. All I'm hearing from you is, oh, wait, I understand finances. I understand how to be fiscally responsible. How was that, how was that resonating in the community when you're talking to people?
It's resonating really well. People peek up, they think, oh, wait, I, I think that's a really good strategy. And understanding that we have some planning to do ahead of us. We just have the fiscal planning that we need to put together. We have a comprehensive 10-year master plan that we also need to put together too. And that resonates with people because nobody just wakes up one day and says, I'm just going to go do X, Y, Z. I'm going to go buy a house. I'm going to buy a car, all right? It's some planning in order to do that, or you would hope that it would take some planning in order, in order to do that. But when it's your dollars, and because that's what we're dealing with, it's taxpayers' dollars. You have to be responsible with that. And you have to put some good use and some good plans in place to take us to the next level. We want growth. We want to keep Zionsville and what it's, what's unique about it. But we don't want to just 100% be strapped down to residentially either. We're very heavily on the residential side. So when you were talking about tax and eliminating that, I, I almost had like a crippling effect inside my heart about what that would do for us. But the other, the other aspect of that too is we need to grow in commercial revenues. And, you know, and to do that, we have to really sit down and plan. And it can't be a haphazard like plan here, here, here. You know, one of the best things that Mayor, Mayor Siren brought to us was the Zionsville Gateway. And really kind of reimagining that area and what we could do with that. And I think that was one of the best things that she ever did. It was one of her campaign promises that she ran on. But it's allowing us to be able to think beyond TIF. That actually being in a TIF district, and they're going to have to create a new TIF for that. But beyond that, there are some strategies that we could put in place that were not bound by TIF, as an example.
So everyone, we all know, all politics is local. And so you are literally at the ground level, other than a precinct committee person, right? So what areas of the, of the town, does the town council govern directly versus what they get from the county, what they get from the state? What does the town actually manage?
So the town, and rephrase that a little bit for me, Dana, just to make sure.
You're going to be making decisions, so you're on the count when you win, right? What kind of, what kind of fiscal areas, what areas will the money be dispersed to and how will you guys decide? Like what areas of the town will you guys be managing? Is it, you know, waste management? Is it, you know, that, that kind of stuff?
So now, so much waste management that comes before the town council, but it can. But there are appropriations that will come before the town council. Times, it is the TIF bonds that you are reviewing for as the fiscal body for the town. There could be other bonds that come before the town council. There can be appropriations to go out and spend. As an example, we had to go to a new financial software system. So there was an appropriation for that and a decision on that. There's tons of other, like, planning type of decisions that the, that the town council will make. Honestly, it's, it's so expansive that I don't know if I could drill that down to just a few.
Nah, you don't have to. You can take all the time you need. I mean, because I think it's important that people know that you know what you'll be doing, right?
Yeah. And it's, it's an oversight too. And the big portion of the fiscal body of the town is the budget. And the budget season, it's a season. It's not just a one-time meeting. You have a budget season, and it's usually in the fall time or early fall time. And it's several months. It lasts from probably the end of summer to the end of November usually. And it is going through the departments, understanding what their needs are, and then deciding on how to spend those funds in the next year. And so we did that this past season, the town council and Mayor Siren, and they sat down. And we actually had one of the nicest meetings I've ever attended. It was great, but they all sat in a room and really talked about the budget and the plan, and then had some really great dialogue around that. And I was really hopeful that that would be a turning point. Fortunately, that was not the case, and so friction came about shortly after that. But, but it's really about how you're going to spend your dollars. And then as, as an example, the fire department needed some new equipment, so did our police department. And instead, and I thought this was a great thing that our council actually brought up, was instead of waiting until the brand-new year, could we purchase those things now and get in line before everybody else?
Right, right.
Equipment things. So they actually did work together and started to work on those. I thought that was great because it's those type of things that they need to kind of start thinking about and planning for. But the budget is a big one. I mean, it's how you spend taxpayer dollars.
Yeah.
And if you're not fiscally responsible for that, then what are you doing with it?
Absolutely.
Because you gotta, you gotta be responsible with the, with the funds that you're entrusted with.
So I don't know if this, obviously, this probably doesn't fall under your purview because it's, you know, it would definitely be, you're more in the town. Which, by the way, what is the difference between a town and a city?
So for us, Zionsville was considered a town for, and we still are a town municipality. We're one of the few left in the state that are still considered a town. And, but prior to Mayor Siren and Tim Hack, we did have a town manager. So it was an elected position that managed the town. And we then appointed Tim as mayor, and then we held an election. And that's how Emily Styron got elected to our mayor today.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so there was, I saw, I read in the paper the other day that there's some folks in Boone County who are suing Lebanon, if I'm not mistaken, about an Eli Lilly state collaboration project. Obviously, that's in Lebanon. It's not, they annexed some, some property in Boone County, and they're going to build this complex, blah, blah, blah. Obviously, that's not in Zionsville. But would, would that be like a kind of conversation that the town council, if it were to like show up in, in Zionsville? Would those be kind of the conversation? You talked about commercial growth, and that would, that's one of those. And so there's people suing because they don't want it in Boone County. I don't understand, but...
Yeah. Yeah, it can come before your council. It can also come before your county council too as well.
Okay.
I could see the, for the county council before I could the, the town municipality and that council. But yeah, it is something that could. Whenever you're annexing anything, it can get a little passionate and a little heated. So we've been through all of that here. But yeah, it can, it can create some.
It can ruffle some feathers, baby, because I know Fishers went through it, Bloomington went through it, you know, you know what? Yes, yes. Indiana's Own Dana Black, I am talking to Amanda Rubek right here on Turned Left. Hey, guys, if you like what she's talking about, her Act Blue link is right there. Donate to her account, so you know, because it takes money to run a campaign. She's obviously intelligent, and she can count, so she'll know if you donated. I'm just saying, donate to her account. She's obviously intelligent and she can count. So she'll know if you donated. I'm just saying donate to her account. Um, so, but you know what? There's more, yeah, it's fiscal and it's numbers and it's accounting. But what other, what other like intangibles do you think that you'll be able to cultivate uh, in this role uh, as a, as a town councilman at, at large?
So the other things that I hope to cultivate is really bringing back um, collaboration. I, I felt like that has been a missed opportunity for us. I have begun to sit down with some of our mayor candidates to understand what their positions are. Um, it's not serving to ourself.
Hmm.
Um, to politics. It is really about serving Zionsville. And that's one of my three key strategies with Zionsville focused. Um, it's bringing that collaboration back so that we can get some stuff done. And understand where we need to go and where we need to be. I mean, when graduates think of a place to live first, um, and then go look for a company to work at. We have to reimagine what that future looks like for Zionsville. How to create that because it's huge, right? And there are some amenities that Zionsville really wants. Uh, community center is one of them. We lack having a community center here in the town, but how do you pay for that? Um, I think that one of those um, those items that, you know, we're a town within, inside of a park. We have over 20 plus parks in Zionsville. Um, how do you continue to support those? Um, understand that they might not always be revenue streams back. It's a park, right?
Right.
Um, but understanding how do you create that connectivity, the, the walkability, the place that people want to come and raise a family? The graduates that are graduating, how do we attract them here? How do we attract some of the businesses that come for workforce? Um, you know, we want the headquarters out of Creekside. Uh, there might be some other opportunities to put them other places in our community. But how do we start to, to reimagine that and think that? Um, the other thing too is.
What are some, what are some of your ideas? Like, you know, like you see something and you go, ooh, why don't we? Or do you want to give any of those secrets away?
Say that one more time. You cut out just a second.
Sorry. Uh, what, what are some of the things that you, you, you see? Like if you see a, a, you see you're driving through town and you see a thing and you're like, ooh, I wish we could do this. Now, if you don't want to give any trade secrets away, I understand, but.
Hey, if somebody picks up my trade secrets and runs with them, then stuff will get accomplished, right?
Okay. And then you know what? It's date and timestamp. So we'll know who did it, who said it first.
There you go. As long as this stuff gets done.
Come on now. As long as it get, get her done, honey. So what, what are some of the things that you see? Like you would love to see Zionsville do?
Yeah. There are two main things that I would love to see. We're in the middle of form based code currently.
Um, what, what does that mean?
Mm hmm. So form based code is kind of like the DNA. Um, as humans, we all have DNA. Um, but form based code is really the DNA for the town. And I can see that as um, creating um, some opportunities within our town to kind of replicate some of the structures that exist here.
Okay.
And what I mean by that is when you look at our downtown village, it's very iconic. It's the, the one thing that most people like think of when they think of Zionsville. And can you replicate that?
Hmm.
I'm not saying about taking a whole downtown and replicating it somewhere else and recreating that street, right?
Right.
What I'm talking about is we have Marysville Road that has just opened up. But can you create a destination point inside of Zionsville where it's another like mini little main street? Um, can you put some bricks down around that development? And really kind of create a, a place where somebody wants to come and buy a cup of coffee? Maybe go do some more shopping. Maybe there's an office that they can stop by and drop into. Uh, maybe they can go and um, enjoy some leisure activities too as well. There's a whole host of things that you can do. That is one area that I think that we need to um, rethink or reimagine. Um, and it's prime for development at the moment. The other thing too is Michigan Road.
Hmm.
I have said this time and time and time again. Um, I drive up and down Michigan Road almost every day to work. Um, and Michigan Road is a forgotten about corridor. It is a critical gateway into Zionsville. And it's going to take some collaboration, not just within our own community, but it will take collaboration with the city of Carmel. You're going to have a brand new mayor over in Carmel too as well.
Mm hmm.
And it's going to take some collaboration with the city of Indianapolis. Um, cause there's points in Michigan Road where Indy owns it, um, Carmel owns it and Zionsville owns it. And today, when somebody talks about the haphazard development on Michigan Road, people say, oh, that's Carmel. And then Carmel folks say, oh, that's Zionsville. Nobody claims it.
Right, right.
Um, and when you think of Michigan Road, it's not a destination point. But that's where I think Zionsville needs to go is start thinking of some destination points where people can go and spend some time. Um, it also lacks connectivity too. Um, there's not anything that really kind of connects it from Michigan Road on foot all the way into the village. How do you start rethinking that or thinking of the future of that connectivity? Because when you think of people that want to come and spend, live, work and play, um, how can you connect some of those um, avenues? And Michigan Road, I, I hear a lot when, when I bring this up to people. Um, well, NDOT owns the road. You know what? NDOT owned Meridian and Keystone before Carmel took it over.
Hello, hello. And you know what? I'm glad that you explained what you meant by replicate. Because I got a little, I got a, just for a half second, I got nervous. Like, oh my God, is she going to do the Carmel thing? Where the McDonald's looks like the KFC and the KFC looks like the Taco Bell? I never could understand why Carmel made all of their buildings look alike. I just, I never could. I mean, hey, you like it? I love it. I, it, I just never made sense to me like. And, and that is one thing, you're right. Zionsville is very authentic. You, you know, you drive through Zionsville. It is a very authentic place. I love the eclecticism of it. It's almost like it's, it's even more eclectic than Fountain Square and, and Broad, Broad Ripple in my opinion. It's more like Nashville, Indiana, if you ask me, where it has the, the charm and, and the feel of it. So yeah, I'm, I'm glad you, you, you clarified that. And I love, you've given me a new term to, to roll with and that's a destination point, not just a drive through, right? I love that. Those, those are great ideas. And I don't see why people wouldn't want you to be at the helm because you're not going to waste any dollars when you create these destination points.
Right.
And you, and the other thing is like, you know, we, you, you mentioned um, with these destination points, you're actually wanting to improve the quality of life. Um, because Indiana pretty much sucks in that area. I mean, look, listen y'all, I, I'm Indiana's own. I don't, you know, I don't claim the name if I'm, if I don't love my state. But you know, if you're going to be, if you love a thing, you got to be honest about a thing. And, and you know, the fact that we don't have, we need more people like you who, who are looking at, okay, how do we look at Indiana holistically? And not just revenue generating or more business growth, but how do we make it so people actually want to stay here? So talk about maybe, you know, I, I've never lived in Zionsville. I, but I did grow up on Michigan Road. I ain't gonna lie to you. I grew up, what is the, what, what is the, you know, cost of living? And you know, what is the affordable housing? Cause like you're creating these spaces and you, you got me interested in these destination points. Can I live there?
We are on the high end. Um, so we do Dana, we lack affordable housing. Um, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie there. Um, and so that is definitely something that Zionsville does have to think about for the future is, how do we create more affordable housing? Um, cause that will be key to attracting more graduates.
Yeah.
Need to be able to live here, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I think the average home size is probably 450,000. I haven't looked that up here recently. Um, and that might be on the low end. Um, but it's, it's costly to live in Zionsville. Um, and it's not cheap.
No, no. Are they, are they thinking about doing any of those dual use uh, spaces? Like where there's retail at the bottom and then, you know, apartments at the top? Or is that something that you guys are looking at up there?
Yeah. And I think um, in the Zionsville gateway, you'll see some of that too as well. And I do like the plan. They have put some buffers in um, to, to put single family housing in up against some apartments. Um, and I don't think they're like huge massive apartments that um, have the remonstration with Sycamore Flats as an example. But there will be some apartments um, and some livability um, within the gateway. But then we also have a development coming out on Michigan Road. Um, and it's called The Farm. And that's owned by Pittman Partners and that will have some new apartments out there. Um, and I think that you'll start to see some of that um, as well. Um, and that also creates some, a little bit more of that affordability to be here. Um, but it's also going to be a really nice development for us with some mixed use in it too. Um, that will have a 400 unit apartment complex and then there will be some commercial spaces and, um, hopefully a new grocery store too as well. Um, that will also attract a higher, higher end grocery store there. And then also um, a few other retail shops and maybe a, a bank along there too.
I love it.
Um, but yeah, but um, there's also some outdoor space within that um, development. And again, when I think of destination points, I kind of think of, hey, if you live there in one of those apartments, you might spend some time there.
Yeah.
Uh, and then how do you then take that and then go down into the village and spend some funds there too? Um, it's about really connecting people together and making sure that we spend some, some time at, understanding what our housing looks like today, what it needs to go to into the future and how do we plan for that?
I love it.
And that, that's, if you haven't picked up yet, I'm a planner.
I love it. Hey, but that's what we need. We have, I mean, I just talked about the clowns in, in Washington and how they're haphazardly just tossing stuff around. They ain't playing, the only plan they had was January 6th and it failed. I'm just, I'm just saying. So, and the other thing that you talked about, you mentioned was Zionsville is a town within a park or something, you know? Um, talk about your, your green space up there. I didn't, I never had heard, I've never heard that before. What does that mean to someone who lives outside of Boone County in Zionsville?
So we have more parks than I think almost any city or town in the state of Indiana within our, our, our town districts.
Borders, mm hmm.
Yeah. And it's wonderful. I am a huge fan of the rail trail. So I'm a runner um, as well. And I run up and down the rail trail and currently we're actually expanding that. And I'm very excited about that because I use it quite frequently. Um, but the nice thing too is it runs into certain parks for us, um, like Overly Wayman, Mormon. Um, and then it also goes into Stark Park. Uh, there's tons of parks for us here and it's absolutely wonderful. Um, but the town also has an opportunity in front of it with the Carpenter Nature Preserve. And that is an opportunity for us to really take that. Um, and it's privately held right now. Uh, we were very fortunate that Jim and Nancy Carpenter picked that up. Um, and then we're looking at the collaborations and bonds for that, um, for the town to then take that over. Um, I could see, you know, a great nature preserve out there. I think I could see a wonderful um, community center potentially. But we are in need of a nature center and I could see us taking that piece of property and putting something out there. Now it's a long-term plan. Um, but you know, it would be great to even see a farm to table type of an experience out there.
I like that.
Hmm. I mean, if you think about, and, and this is again, taking some best practices from some other people. Um, Carberry as an example, has some really exciting things coming up on the horizon that they're planning for. Like a farm to table experience, um, some camping lodge, lodging type of um, experiences out there.
Interesting.
Yeah. So, and if you think about some of those opportunities to really take that park and kind of create something different. Um, it was an old golf course for us. Um, but the nice thing right now is um, just in the short time that it hasn't been a golf course, all of the nature life that's come back into that party is pretty profound. It's absolutely just breathtaking if you ever walk out there. Uh, which I encourage if anybody gets that opportunity to just to stand at the very helm of it and just look out and just understand what we're trying to, to create. Because it's a, it's a once in a lifetime generational opportunity that will be felt for many generations in Zionsville.
Especially since, I mean, especially since, you know, people at the state house are doing everything they can to not let us wean off of fossil fuels. I mean, literally, I mean, there's legislation right now going through the state house where, you know, some of our, our, our power, um, companies are like, look, we need to transition away from fossil fuels. And the, the state house is like, no, you can't. You gotta keep polluting us. I think that's great that you, you're sharing with us, even something hap- you know what, what I'm finding more interesting though in this conversation? You are very knowledgeable about the town that you live in. And I can tell that like you were like super passionate about, you know, not just what you get out of it, but how you can create a better space for the people who live there and even those of us that want to come visit. That's, that's pretty dope.
Yeah, it's about, I mean, it's, it's having a Zionsville focus. And it's, it had to be part of my platform, absolutely a hundred percent. Because it's not about me, it's about the community. And it's, it, I'm not going to lose sight of that. And I actually was having um, a conversation with a group of people last night. And I had said that, you know, for me, this isn't about my opinion or my voice. This is about the community's voice. Um, I can put the fiscal expertise and the planning behind it and the leadership skills. Um, but really what resonates with me is understanding what the community wants and their voice. And then articulating that through the fiscal body for the town.
So I've got it. So I've got to ask though, like you talked about, you went to some of those council meetings and, you know, there's a lot of ranting. Uh, humans are gonna human. How does your, how will your, how will you use your leadership style, right? To be able to, you know, bring forth some, some collaboration and cross the aisle work? I mean, cause obviously you're a planner, you know, numbers, you can, you can read a spreadsheet. So how are you going to use those soft skills to maybe accomplish some of your goals?
So for me right now, I actually have a pretty good working relationship with um, everyone on, on the town council. Um, I have had mutual respect with them. So they're all Republicans, um, all men. Um, and that demonstrates my ability to be able to work with across the aisle.
Wait, 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 wait. All Republicans and all men? And you said there's a lot of ranting going on?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want, I just wanted to make sure I got that correct. I just, I mean, you know, I just want, I just want to make sure I heard that right. All men, all Republicans and a lot of ranting. Okay. All right. That is, it's not saying anything about all men and all Republicans. It just so happens to be that way in Evan, uh, Zionsville. I almost said Evansville, Zionsville. Anyway, go ahead. Keep talking about how you're going to work with these all men.
Yeah.
All Republicans who rant.
So for me, um, you know, I've been a leadership for 20 years. And it's a matter of understanding people and how to work with people. But it's about asking also really good questions and keeping people focused on the task. So my leadership style is a blend between empathetic leadership and also um, an interjection of reality based. And so it's helping understand their roles.
Okay.
You can move forward and that's what reality based means. Um, but understanding what their role is in that and then bringing them back to the task. But understanding where they're coming from too as well. And that's where the empathy comes into play is I can help other people understand the perspective of other people pretty well. Um, and it's just a skill that I've kind of picked up over 20 plus years in leadership. Because you have to get people to understand other people's perspectives and where they're coming from in order to help, understand how they need to move forward or to understand, hey, this is where this person is coming from. And it's okay to feel that way, but let's talk about the, the, the task at hand and move that forward. What do you think the solution could be? And what does great look like today? Um, you know, how can you be a part of that? And can you go help that person do that?
Oh, oh my gosh. I love it. I mean, y'all, a very, very, very smart politician. I need y'all to understand who we're talking to. This is, yes, I understand you're running for town council right now, but you are definitely executive level. You know, we'll let you hang out in the legislative branch for now. We're gonna let you do that for now. You know, but uh, you are definitely an executive level type leader. And uh, our state definitely um, is going to benefit from you stepping out into the political space and wanting to give your skills to, to your, to your neighbors. And I, 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 this is, woo, you're blowing me away. So now, now that you've corralled the men and you've got them paying attention, um, talk about uh, what is the first thing that you want to collaborate with when you're elected?
So the first thing that I want to collaborate on is those plans. And what I mean by that is the 10 year um, comprehensive plan, can we start to work on that? Um, I want to understand from every department. Um, I want to understand from every department head, which I'm actually going to spend time with every department head from now to November and understand what their plans are, wh- what they need. Um, what they need now, what they need in five years and what they need in 10 years.
Okay.
And then it's about taking that fiscal plan and putting that into play too as well. Because we need to start creating one. Um, and then I'm going to sit down with the mayor, um, whoever's elected to that seat. Um, and then really work on what do we want this to look like? Today, we are known and really starting to get a reputation for being riddled in discourse. And that's not something that we need to have now or into the future. How do we change that? It's going to come down to communication. Um, I do think that there will have to be a strong presence, um, by the president of the town council as to how they're going to take us forward and eliminate the ranting.
Um, maybe you can be the president of the town council.
I could, um, bring back a positive image both to the council and to the administration seats. Um, and make it about Zionsville.
Right.
Again, it comes back to that priority for me. This is, this is about Zionsville. This is not about politics. It is about putting our community at the helm of our decision-making and making that the most important thing that we possibly can do.
I, I, I love it and I agree with you 100%. And I love that as a public servant, you're not doing it because you know that you would look good on a poster. You're doing it because you want to be a servant. And you know, and, and the fact that you're saying that, that the town was kind of mired in this reputation of, of a lot of discourse speaks to the necessity for diversity. Not just diversity in gender and, uh, race and religion, but also diversity of thought. So the, a lot of the discourse, you know, it comes from the fact that you got people thinking the exact same way. And even though they may have, they may have drawn different conclusions, they came to the conclusion probably the same way. And it's like, wait, I took this path. Why don't you see it my way? And if you don't, you gotta have diversity of thought. And I think, you know, having, uh, you know, I don't want, I don't want an all Democratic nothing. Just like I don't want an all Republican anything. I don't want an all man thing. Like I don't want an all woman thing. I want there to be diversity of thought, diversity of, uh, of ideas. And if you don't get, I mean, literally this, what you're describing speaks to the, why it's so important that, you know, whatever we do in a diverse nation, in a diverse community, that we have diversity in our leadership. It's not about ticking boxes and, and, and did we, you know, did, did, did a person reach, you know, all the criteria that we're looking for? But it's about diversity of thought and that is so important. And I, I, I am rooting for you. You guys, click on her donation link. It's right there. Donate some money so that she can get some yard signs, do some melons, whatever she gotta do so she can win this election. All right. So tell the people, um, about any events that you have coming up and where they can find you.
So we are in the middle of, um, designing our meet and greets. Um, I will have more information to come, but stay tuned because you can follow those and look at, um, those events on amandarubekforsionsville.com. That is my website. My Facebook page is Amanda Rubek for Zionsville. And my Instagram is Amanda for Zionsville. And then Twitter is just Rubek Amanda. So follow me and I will start posting all of those events. They will be coming live here before too long. Um, and we'll get those planned and on the calendar.
All right. So give us your elevator pitch. Why should people vote for you?
So people really should vote for me because I bring both leadership, I bring all three things. Um, leadership, fiscal expertise and Zionsville focus. So it's something that we desperately need here in Zionsville on the town council. Because we are in that critical phase of redevelopment and growth. I'm not doing this for myself. I am really doing this, um, to be in service to the community and to lend my expertise. Um, and make sure that we are thinking of the future. Um, and keeping what's unique about Zionsville, that eclectic, wonderful feel that you just talked about Dana. Um, but also taking us to the next level and that growth that we desperately do also need.
I love it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you something and people are gonna be upset with me when I say it, but I'm gonna say it anyway. You have the exact disposition and delivery that Indiana voters like all over the state. You are very calm and very measured in the way you answer any of your questions. And Indiana folks like that. They don't like us rah rah people, right? There's, there's only so much rah rah they can take. So I, no, I'm never going to run for governor because they never going to vote for me. Cause I'm just too in they face. But you definitely have, look, look at, look at Mayor Pete and how people like Mayor Pete. Not saying that you are Mayor Pete, please understand, but the delivery style, the very measured. Um, I believe we put you on Fox News and if they were to ask you some dumb questions, you would be able to put him in a place like he does. Um, and Indiana likes that. So I, I know that, you know, it's all about Zionsville and I love that your passion and your commitment is to your community. But as someone who was always looking to recruit, uh, especially women to run for office, don't get too comfy. Go ahead and solve the problems and get your 10-year plan put together. Cause Indiana's all gonna come find you and be like, look, we need you for this office. So we need you for that office. You, you are, you are bringing the funk and you're, you know, I don't have to acknowledge your intelligence. You already know that. And I just love what you're bringing to the table. And I wish you the absolute best of luck running for office. Indiana's on Dana Black, uh, we're talking to Amanda Rubek right here on Turn Left. She is running for town council in Zionsville at large. If, if she wins, she will integrate the town council with a woman and a Democrat. I think you guys need to get on board and support her, uh, and help her candidacy out. Obviously it's primary season, so y'all know me, I don't endorse. But you guys should definitely check her out because she's an intelligent woman who is ready to, uh, bring positive, progressive, forward-looking changes, uh, to Zionsville. All right. Listen, y'all, there's always something coming up. Uh, I, I am watching the boards. I'm watching the emails and I will start advertising, uh, the events that are coming up around the state. But please note, if you would like to advertise your event, come talk to me. It's not even like, again, I'm not here to make a lot of money. I'm here to help Democrats win elections. Act Blue pays my salary. Act Blue makes sure that I get my mortgage paid. I get to now spend all my energy doing what I love to do. And that's helping Democrats get elected. So if you have an event or if you have a function that's coming up and you want to advertise it on the show, reach out to me. We'll put it on a scroll and your event will come up. We'll talk about what that looks like. Um, and also obviously Black Pro Studios is always trying to help you guys with your live events. If you want to livestream something, my face don't have to be on it. My, not Turn Left don't have to be on it. I want to help you. I want to make sure that you guys are getting exposure and you're getting your messages out to your communities so that they know who you are. Let's use this platform to amplify who we are as Democrats. Because if we wait for the other media outlets to pay attention to who we are and what we do, that you won't be heard. So let's use this platform to amplify. Also, I want you guys to tune into Indiana Talks. Um, the, if you missed the live show, catch the re, the rebroadcast every, uh, day at five o'clock. Yep. When you're driving home from work, you can catch Turn Left on Indiana Talks. That's my dude, Gary Snyder. He does his thing. Make sure you tune in. And always, 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 always support your county parties. If you have not donated to your county party, go to Act Blue. Yes, I said it again. Go to Act Blue, fi- type in the name of your county party. Donate some money to those county parties because that's how these candidates get the support that they need, uh, outside of what they raise, right? It's at the county party level. And if you are listening to this show and you go to Act Blue and your county party doesn't have an Act Blue account, ask them what's going on? How am I supposed to help people if you don't have an account? And then you need to reach out to me and you know, I get to help you with that. So there's a lot of information I'm giving you guys. This is the beginning of the year. Everybody's excited. Filing is underway. Candidates are getting their names on the ballot. Trust me, I'm bringing you candidates. Plus I have confirmed for next month that we will talk to our state party chair. A lot of changes going over at the State House, so we want to hear about it. I'm reaching out to our Marion County Chair. Uh, y'all know it. I know y'all don't like it when it's always Indy-centered. But yo, this is the largest city in the state and the economic hub of our state. So come on, cut me some slack in Indianapolis. But as always, I love chatting with my guests. Thank you, Amanda, for joining us. Uh, Indiana's on Dana Black, Turn Left. You know, I will be back next week with some young folks I'm really excited about. These young people who are getting involved. I'm a, I'm young at heart, so I'm gonna bring these young people to you. And hopefully I won't wear my food self out. All right. I'll holler at y'all next week. Peace.